Move right into the agenda for City Managers' report and issues raised at prior meetings.
At the prior meeting, there was a discussion from Neptune's resident about trees on Washington Avenue. Those trees were either part of a planning board application or approved by the street commissioner of public works to be moved to help someone forsaken getting on the trees around us. That's all.
Special events, Lisa?
First application before you is from the Asbury Park Fishing Club, and it requests us to use city dates for Commission Hall for their annual event, March 9th and 10th. Second request is from Asbury Park Little League to use our city hall lobby for their registrations every Saturday in January. And lastly, is a rally to be held January 19th on the boardwalk, a women's march. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you.
Item we presented, undersized lot sale of 1322 Springwood Avenue.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. 1322 Springwood Avenue is owned by us. The entire surrounding area is owned by another private property owner, so we can't use this. We have no use for it. So we're looking to sell it at least sold by ordinance for $35,000, which will be introduced at the next meeting. But if we have no use for this, we would like to unload it and put it on the tax roll.
Hey, can I go back to the women's, because this is an add-on, so I don't really know, I don't know anything about it, which is totally fine. So when, so they want to do a women's march gathering on the boardwalk?
Yes.
And this isn't the Asbury Park Women's March people who did it previously?
No, this is a different group from Somerset.
So the only thing I'm going to say is they're like, well, we're a really small baseball group of women who don't really need anything, but you know, those things tend to become really big.
Mm-hmm.
So I would just make them a, the Women's March from '16 was like a $10,000 event. So all I'm saying is I understand that they think their event's going to be small, but we should maybe reach out and tell them if this has the potential of getting really big, that the city is going to charge you those services that we end up having to use.
Okay.
Right? I mean, I'm not being crazy with that.
I know.
Listen, six people may come and 6,000 may come.
Yes.
Yes.
That is true. We've experienced it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, at least the local Women's March even had an idea and knew they had to raise $10,000, or knew to raise money. All I'm saying is I would make these people aware based on how much advertising and how they're going to spread the word. If they're not going to spread the word that much, then it's probably not going to get that big. But if they're going to spread the word and try to get a lot of people there, that there are services that are beyond what are in this application that could potentially be part of what happens.
Okay.
And then I would make sure Kelso knows that.
He's already aware.
Okay.
Yeah, police department's aware. But I will make them aware.
Okay.
Any comments or questions regarding the item presented?
No, but can we go back to the tree issue again? So could we, is it possible to work on a better tree ordinance? I don't think we have anything in place, and I know we spoke about it last year, and some other folks have also brought it up, that people just randomly take trees down, and we've got nothing to protect, protect ourselves and protect.
We looked at a couple ordinances.
I think the shade tree looked at it, and I think we got, we got a little sticky on private property telling people what to do.
Well, Tom actually just asked me, we just spoke about this when we did commissions and boards, about perhaps looking, revisiting a tree ordinance.
Okay. Yeah, I'm all for it. I know that when the commission did it, we were a little uncomfortable about telling people what to do.
It was public work. No one, planning was involved, no one knew about the privacy of it. And that's where the bigger issue is.
Right.
Because if it's in the right of way, it needs shade tree commission approval, but private, no one was, there was no consensus between ten people.
The woman who was at the mic, were those private or public? Where were those trees?
Those were in the right of way, but they were sent on Washington.
They go on ridge, they were on public property, and they were damaged from the storm, and that's what I heard from a police officer, because they were at the meeting, and they were damaged from a storm.
Some of them.
Yeah, they were private property. You tell me if I own a house, I want to put it in a storm, or you're going to tell me I can't cut down a tree?
Well, that's an environmental question.
So in other burrows, what people do is they pay into a fund, so then other trees can be purchased and planted on public property.
That's why no one had a consensus and it died.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't an adversarial conversation, it just was like.
No, we could figure out what to do.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We just weren't sure how to handle it. On private land, not publicly.
The public was easy because of these shade tree commission. But on private land, it was, you're looking at caliber, you're looking at age, you're looking at coverage, you're looking at the lot itself. It was, no one knew, no one could reach a consensus on what to do. So we dropped it.
All right, I'm just going to look at some other towns and see what they do.
Jackson is the best in the state. Jackson's one that everyone.
And I'll put it on the Environmental Commission agenda.
Yeah, I think that's great.
No problem.
It's like somebody ACLU is going to sue us over.
The problem.
Yeah. Let me, I have a dying tree in my yard.
Well, dying is different.
A dying tree is different.
Dying disease, you know, safety, obviously, the tree is starting to lean towards the house. No one disagreed that those need to down.
But I got to pay to plant one someplace else?
No, those we, in theory, were exempted. Everyone seemed to be unagreable with that because it's dying, but then there is a couple people said, well, if you're replacing, you should do something somewhere else. And then in most other places, it goes into municipal public parks, but our parks don't have that sort of tree candidates. So then where does it go? So it, it was all, no one could figure out how to do this.
If you want to revisit, revisit, yeah. But the ones on ridge, I believe, were on private property and were hit by a storm, so it was told. And the ones on Washington were part of a planning board resolution where they had to be replaced, I believe. But I think, I think that was a tough one, because between the curb and the sidewalk was like this wide.
Yeah.
And the shade tree commission, I think, even said, you can't put a tree there, because it's just not going to grow, it's going to rip up the side. Okay.
Review of this evening's agenda?
Okay. Resolution 2018, District 3, special events. 54 is a transfer of real estate tax credits from one year to this year. 55 is we're accepting a grant for the Trisour program. 56 is extension of the existing 2018 street performer permits and establishing a temporary moratorium on the issuance of new ones, which ties directly into the introduction of the first ordinance of 2019 entitled Street Performers. This requires background checks on street performers and establishes criteria for the appeal. What would happen is the street performer would be required to, a fingerprint check, we would receive it. Over there, the permit, if it comes back clean, the permit can be granted by the clerk. If it's, if it comes back with a hit, it goes to me if they want to appeal to their standards set forth, which are pretty much everywhere in the state. For example, if someone had an arrest from 1972 for being in a fight, is that really relevant for today? But if someone was just added to negative list, the sexual offender list a week ago, well, that's going to be a different story. So it establishes a criteria to move forward with the appeal process.
And then we have the add-on resolution 2018-57?
Yes, for the rejection of bids, rejection of an open process for engineer, special projects engineer, and a fourth of all happen. We wanted to substantially change those bids.
Yeah, we didn't change them.
Matters by City Council?
So on January 16th, the Sunset Lake Commission meets here in council chambers, and we will have the city's engineer here to talk about a master plan for Sunset Lake and Sunset Park. We're asking the public to come out and provide input about what we want this park to look like. How do we make it more user-friendly? What can we do to engage people and just make this park a more friendly place? So that's January 16th at 7:00, right here in council chambers. Also, Interfaith is doing an Asbury's Got Talent on January 26, 7:00, Cool Cafe. It's when auditions begin. And one of the things that the Music Foundation has offered is an opening slot in the Springwood Park concerts for the winner of the talent contest.
Saturday, January 12th, 9:00 to 12:00, there will be a coke giveaway and a food giveaway at the Transportation Center. Hope to see you there. Bye.
These are just reminders. The city's walking and bike plan, your opportunity to give us feedback is, ends on the 11th, so please, it's up on our website, we have hard copies somewhere around here. So just know that comments end after the 11th. And then this is a reminder for January 15th, for the North End Boardwalk project, that is from 7 to 9, and that is going to be at Thoroughgood Marshall, and it's going to be in the gymnasium. So 7 to 9 on Tuesday, January 15th, at Thoroughgood Marshall Elementary School.
I have nothing, thank you.
Matters by City Manager?
None at this time.
Matters by the City Attorney?
I have nothing at this time.
This time will recess until 7:00 PM. Open up the council meeting of the City of Asbury Park. Roll call, Councilmember Chapman?
Here.
Councilmember Clayton? Councilmember Kendall?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Here.
Mayor Moore?
Here.
Please rise for a silent prayer moment of reflection, please. Flag salute. Apology allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice.
As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public law 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Prestige Coaster and the Star Ledger on January 2nd, 2019, and posted on bulletin board the same day. All notices are on file with the city clerk. At this time, can I have a motion to open the meeting to the public, please?
Move it.
Second.
Anybody who wishes to speak, please come up to the mic in the middle, state your name and address for the record. Each member has three minutes to speak.
Hi, Linda Phillips, 400 Deal Lake Drive. Last time I was here, I asked about opening on the beach and the parking lot, and so I wanted to say thank you, because they're open. So thank you. That's all.
Thank you.
Hi, Carrie Butch, 500 Deal Lake Drive. I want to start off by thanking you also. I want to thank the mayor and council right now for your commitment to getting some diversity on our boards and commissions. There's been a lot of work. I know you guys have been working very, very hard on it. We had that, you guys had that board and commission open house at the senior centers. You participated in the December 11th meeting, and you're encouraging people to apply. So I just wanted to say that, just to tell everybody, just remind everybody to continue to look at what's open and do what council, Deputy Mayor Quinn asked, which is maybe to visit an actual commission meeting. And, but I do want to say that we did a preliminary assessment. We also did, we did a talk on environmental justice, which went into unconscious racism. So I have a couple of things to say, I'm going to say them as quickly as I can. I think we can all agree that in Asbury Park, we want boards and commissions to reflect the community, because that's what it's all about, right? That's what democracy is all about, are all our community members participating. So I want to quote Sustainable Jersey, when they talk about diverse board membership encourages the exchange of different perspectives, facilitates innovative problem solving, and supports social equity in communities. So I have one minute, I'm trying to decide what I talk about. Okay, I might have to come next week or next time, but some of the things that came out of our meeting, which Councilwoman Clayton, Deputy Mayor Quinn, and Eileen came to, as long as many, many people in this room came to, when we were talking, there's a lot of people that are concerned about diversity and the lack of on our boards. So we talked about four things that I just want to mention. We talked about doing outreach differently, perhaps going to churches, going through announcements. We talked about potentially creating boards that are relevant to a diverse community, such as the Civilian Complaint Review Board, the Racial Justice Commission, Human Relations Commission, Waterfront Redevelopment Advisory Board, and a youth council. Also mentioned here one day was the Landmarks Council. So if people have energy around something, it's a good idea to create a commission, especially if those folks are people of color, and we're not having that many people of color on our boards right now. We also talked about including youth. And last but not least, I just want to talk about a culture change really quick. Diversity training for chairs. Articulate the vision. If you want people of color on our boards and commissions, if you want Asbury Park boards and commissions to be representative, articulate that and say that that's what you want, because I think people need to hear that that's what you want.
Okay, thank you, Carrie.
But I thank you, and I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Polly Shilga, 1100 Fifth Avenue. Ditto, Carrie. That could be all I'm going to say, but it isn't. There's no accusation of overt racism in the development of the private beach club on the waterfront. But the boardwalk and waterfront in Asbury Park is a place where black people haven't felt comfortable or welcome for generations. There are very few black people walking on the boardwalk on any summer day, and there are reports even that kids have been harassed. All businesses are white-owned. Even the huge See Here Now Festival was a sea of white people. I saw the picture just recently, it was a lot of white people. Only recently are more black families coming to the beach, thanks to a more welcoming and inclusive atmosphere. This private club and the appearance of a private-looking beach area in front of it will effectively prevent black families from accessing a significant part of the waterfront. About half of the residents of Asbury live in one quadrant of the city, and they're mostly black or people of color. Many may have no interest in going to the beach or to the waterfront, but even if some do, a daily beach badge may be financially out of reach, let alone a beach club membership. Many residents from all parts of the city have expressed opposition to the beach club, so on behalf of Save Asbury's Waterfront, we believe it would be of interest to the city and to iStar to craft an agreement for an accessible north beach for all. And in the meantime, iStar, who isn't here, don't hold the boardwalk hostage. Put the boardwalk back. It can and must be done before this summer. Asbury Park has come such a long way since the 70s and aspires to be a welcoming and inclusive city. Let's work this out. This is iStar's philosophy, as stated on their website. "We are true to our word and do right by our lenders, our borrowers, our partners, and the communities in which we work and help to shape. Our people strive to deliver not just a thoughtful solution, but an experience clients and partners trust and want to replicate time and again." That's pretty powerful. So Mayor Moore, we spoke not too long ago, and you stated that iStar would be able to reinstall the boardwalk at no cost to them. Could you clarify that?
Are you?
I'm paraphrasing.
When you're done.
I'm done. That's it. That's my question at the end. I mean, it's.
What did I say?
Yeah, it was, I'm definitely paraphrasing, but we were on the phone, and you, we were talking about replacing the boardwalk right after it was taken out. And you said, you know, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but you said that iStar could put the boardwalk back at no cost to them, or very little cost to them, and I was surprised by that, because.
At that point in time, absolutely. If we had gone to the table, my, my personal opinion, if, when we had the meeting on the 8th, and then the meeting on the 30th, if there was movement by iStar, it could have been, the boardwalk could have been up by July 4th of this year. There's been no movement, we're having the meeting on the 15th, so anybody who thinks there's going to be a boardwalk down there this year, I think is totally mistaken. No cost to them, it's no cost to them, because they take all the money out of the rab money, they get reimbursed, and they get 9% profit plus money. So does it cost iStar a penny? No, they get reimbursed 100%.
Okay. So just one more question, in terms of, it can't be done by the summer because it takes so long to build a boardwalk, or because they're just not going to do it?
Well, because we have a meeting on the 15th, that we're going to listen to everybody's suggestions, as per everybody wanted.
Right.
And then we're going to have to like, figure out something to make it feasible for everybody. And then by the time you get the CAFR permits, go back out to bid, because the permit's going to be changed, go out to bid and everything, it's just not feasible. It will be done by Memorial Day.
Maybe partly through the summer?
Yeah, well, it depends on what happens on the 15th, and how quickly everybody agrees on something. When I say everybody, that includes iStar.
That sounds helpful. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Joyce Grant, Asbury Tower in Asbury Park. I want to thank you for opening up the Fisherman's Lot. It has really been helpful. Thank you. According to the Green Acres Division of the State Department of Environmental Protection, there are 13 parcels that were conveyed to developers without Green Acres approval. Is this being rectified, corrected?
Finish all your questions, and we'll answer them at the end.
Excuse me, I didn't hear you?
Finish all your questions or statements within your three minutes, and we'll answer your questions at the end.
All right. Well, that's the first one. And then the only one, the only other one I have, is the Green Acres funding for the Bradley Cove Development Rights been extended? Those are my two questions.
Okay, the second one, we have not heard back, and City Manager can correct me if I'm wrong, we have not, we've applied, we have not heard back from DEP yet.
You're right.
The first one, I think is, somebody's mixing apples and oranges, I'm going to let the City Manager answer.
I'm sorry, John, you're going to have to speak up a little bit.
The first question, I think people are mixing apples and oranges, what has been approved and what has not been approved, so the City Manager will handle that.
All right.
No, he's going to.
But it will be corrected, right?
He's going to answer it first. Maybe it doesn't have to be corrected, maybe it is correct already. Let the City Manager answer, please.
It is correct already. With DEP, when you look at the online system, the mod 4 system, and what DEP was looking at, certain parcels that you're talking about were referenced as commercial properties, commercial parcels. So DEP was under the impression that we gave them to Madison Marquette. That's not true. The ownership is with the city. The way it was set up that way was, we have a lease with them that they can use the properties, and so in our financial software, which is called Edmunds, the only way we can bill Madison is to market as commercial, but it's actually owned by us. So we've given this information to DEP, we haven't heard from them in about a month with it, we've given it to Senator Gopaul's office, it's been shared with you. We've given this information, we own those parcels, it's just the way it forward faces in the tax system.
That's a little complicated for me, and it's a little confusing to me, but why, Green Acres has said, all right, that they sent you correspondence about this, well before that I'm up before you, and that there was no response in the city?
The documents we have on record, and that were also provided by DEP, was they sent correspondence in 2005, and then again in November of this year. So there was a 13-year gap between DEP questioning this.
The questions, what about, they said they were, they had sent you correspondence and reminders.
Their own correspondence to us said 2005, the agreements were entered in Madison Marquette in 2008, I believe, correct? Somewhere along, 2008, 2009, and then they reached out to us again in November. We've sent them our updated Rossi, which is the recreation open space inventory numerous times. We are waiting for DEP to sign off on this documentation. In the Bradley Cove application of five years ago was the correct information. We've given them the correct information as part of the Springwood Avenue Park, we gave them the correct information as per the Central Business District, the land that we swapped with the private developer.
So essentially, what you're saying, Michael?
We're waiting for DEP.
All right. And, and that you're, in a sense, blaming DEP. All right, thank you.
Pam Lamberton, Sunset Avenue. I also thank you for getting the Fisherman's Lot and the beach access open. That was totally to your credit, thank you. Just to tag on to what Joyce is talking about, I am confused about this also. I have a December 20th letter where the DEP states the block and lots that are in, that are discrepant with the city's records. We got this from the DEP through Senator Gopaul's office, and then I also opened the official Rossi inventory, and they don't jive at all.
No.
So I, my, I want to understand what, what Green Acres and open space lands have to do with the boardwalk, Bradley Cove, the Fisherman's Lot, that whole area of Asbury Park, and how you reconcile what the DEP says we owe them as information, and what the Rossi listing has in it?
The Rossi listing is deficient in some of our parcels. And the Rossi listing uses the old block and lots, which were changed about seven or eight years ago. So we are waiting for DEP to review the Rossi that was given to them in March. They have not gone back to me at least, I don't know if they went back to Michelle, about what the parcels are to be. And what we provided them through suburban consulting for Springwood Avenue Park in March was the most recent one, that has all the correct information and the description to it.
You're talking about lot and block numbers, though. I'm talking about the actual parcels of land, because one list references the 420, whatever it is, the 4502 lots, and the Rossi is all over the city and doesn't reference that section except for something called the boardwalk playground.
Correct.
That's the only parcel on the Rossi list down on the beachfront.
The Rossi is deficient from what we provided them. We're waiting for DEP to review the Rossi, tell us what they agree or don't disagree with, and then we either make amendments or don't make amendments. The Rossi, as you pulled those, that you opened, was pulled right off of DEP's website. That is the active official Rossi of the City of Asbury Park, from DEP's website. I pulled it myself.
Okay.
So you read, if you look at the Bradley Cove application, you can see there's discrepancies in the numbers for the Rossi, because that Rossi hasn't been updated in the few years since we did the revow, like, five or six years ago. So put in the open request tonight for the Rossi that was submitted to DEP in March from suburban consulting. We will give you that, and you can compare it. We're waiting on DEP.
Does DEP realize that? Because this, this is from the Senator Gopaul's office?
Yes.
December 20th, and DEP says, this is what we got.
And I told Senator Gopaul's office, this is wrong, please have them correct it, please get back to us. It's only been two weeks and the holidays. DEP needs to correct it and get back to us in saying, here's what was submitted, change it or not change it. They will do whatever they want.
Okay, that's fine, but can you tell us what are the lot and blocks that we're talking about?
Yes. It's in the Bradley Cove application, it's what was sent down.
It's not, it's not on the Rossi list.
No.
So I'm sorry, you want me to open something else? What do you want me to open?
Open the Bradley Cove application, and I'll email you what to open.
Okay.
I'll make it easy.
So I'm just a little lost. So Pam, what are you saying? That, that there are pieces of land that are not on the Rossi list that should be on the list?
Yes.
And Michael, you're saying?
She's right.
Okay.
And we agree, and we're trying to get DEP to take knowledge.
That's all, DEP has to review this and tell us yes or no on these things.
Pam, can you send me that Rossi list? And then, Michael, whatever Pam opens, can you send me that Rossi list, so I can look at it too?
Yes, and I'll, there's a map too that we have, so I'll send you, I'll send it right now, save over these notes.
So you're saying things are missing on the list that should be on the list?
Yes, here's the, yes, yep.
Yes.
And specifically in the, in the north and waterfront area?
Throughout the city.
Yes, that's the only part that I'm looking at.
It's throughout the city. Throughout the city.
And it's very confusing.
It's annoying.
Can I just also ask you to take that piece of the 6 o'clock meeting where you make announcements and move it to the 7 o'clock meeting? Again, you all made great announcements about things that are going to happen in the city over the next week, and none of these people were here. Thank you. We can redo our announcements sometime, just wait on us.
Good evening. Beth Stuckey, Deal Lake Drive. I just want to introduce myself, because this is my first meeting here. I just closed on an apartment in August, moved in in September, chose Asbury Park because the community I came from, I thought Asbury Park reflected this, and I still think that. It is a little distressing to have closed and then to have run into everything that was opposite to what I thought, but I have gotten to know a great many people so far, and I feel like there's a lot of like-mindedness here. However, it is a little distressing to move into a However, it is a little distressing to move into a community and find out that the, some of the values or some of the things that are happening are opposite to what I thought the community was about, which is openness to everybody, diversity. I didn't expect the boardwalk to disappear for me or for anybody else for that matter. I used to walk this boardwalk for years and then I moved in and a month later it was gone. And I am hoping that with the people that I've gotten to know, and I hope to meet a great many more people and with all of you up there, that there is a huge commitment to keeping Asbury, to the reputation that it has as, and is trying to build even more from what I've been able to tell, a, a community where everybody feels welcome, whether it's on the boardwalk or in the stores or on Cookman Avenue or wherever. I, I'm really hoping that the boardwalk becomes accessible and I'm wondering, my question is, and I think it was answered, but I'm going to ask it again anyway. It looks, or it sounds fairly certain, if you can confirm that, that we will not have a boardwalk. I do appreciate that the Fisherman's Lot is open. I got to actually get on the beach on New Year's Day, that was really exciting. But is there going to be a boardwalk? Is there going to be anything to walk? Is it possible at all that before Labor Day, we'll have something to walk on that we can all agree on?
One day, there will be a boardwalk.
Will it be wider than 15 feet?
Excuse me?
Will it be wider than 15 feet?
Depends what everybody says on the 15th. I'm going to ask for it to be wider than 15 feet, so I hope you do also. And I hope it's not a grade level, but that's a discussion. What I will guarantee you is, I guarantee you, there will be beach access, start of the beach season, no matter what the city has to do as far as temporary ramps from where there was last year. So the entrance at Sixth, Seventh Avenue will be open with the ticket booth. The entrance at, the end of the boardwalk will be open with the gate checker. We will not lose beach access to the beach, starting whatever beach season is, May 15th or whatever. So that-
So that'll include for everybody, excuse me, for handicapped people, for, for people with carts, for people with any, everything, that everybody will be able to access it the way they typically did?
We're looking into that as we go along. Because right now, we have the handicap ramp at Sixth Avenue. We're not sure, right, there was no other handicap ramp there. The new plans had called for one being added at Seventh Avenue. We can't add the handicap ramp where it goes back and forth, like one at Sixth Avenue without a boardwalk in place first. We're going to try to make it handicapped accessible, but we can't guarantee that at this time because right now, the boardwalk was higher than like, say, if you started walking up to the boardwalk, you went up and then the board was at height. Now that the boardwalk's won, it's almost a straight shot, where that could be addressed as handicapped accessible.
Hello, Felicia Simmons, 1034 Soul, Asbury Park. Couple questions. First, I'm excited about the meeting on the 15th. But in the article, it said it's done like the Choice Grant meetings were held. And also hearing from what was said, that is a delay. I think it needs to have a little more open style with a transcriber literally there at the meeting, so, so we can progress it. The Choice Grant was a, it made you seem very active. Choice Grant, the way you had to propose different portals and you go to the different spaces and you fill out the little paperwork and then you go to the next satellite piece at the next table and you fill out another. It actually extended the process that could have took pretty much one meeting or two meeting and stretched it out to almost a year. And I'm using that model because you, it was specifically referred to in the announcement for the meeting on the 15th. That delays it and, and just like Mayor Moore said, the delay is what's going to keep us from having a beach. So maybe we need to kind of switch to something that works more efficiently and faster because we all want a beach as soon as possible. And I just want a little more clarification, first time hearing it about the parsonage to Green Acres. But what I got, gathered, tell me if I'm, I didn't understand it properly, is that it didn't, we don't technically have to mention the Green Acres parsonage because we still technically own it and we're only leasing it to I-STAR? And if we're only leasing it to I-STAR, what are we leasing it for? What are they going to do with it?
Is that all your questions?
That's all my questions.
I'd let Michael answer the last question because I didn't understand.
The land is leased to Madison Marquette.
Madison Marquette, yes.
If you look at the tax records, the DMV review, it's listed as commercial. It's not commercial, it's protected open space.
And so it will continue to be protected open space even under the lease? Forever?
Until global warming takes it away.
Okay. And why, so why are we leasing it to Madison Marquette?
Because of the 2002 and 2004 waterfront redevelopment agreement.
And, and that, what I got from Brian's interview from NJ.com is that that agreement can be changed at any time if the city wants it to. I think he directly said it's not done because the city never asked.
I think he's, well, I didn't read that in the interview and it cannot be changed unilaterally. We've met with I-STAR for close to a year trying to get amendments for both global, lot by lot, beachfront and everything, and we're here today.
Okay.
And the city's very open to negotiations and I said that from day one. For this to work, I-STAR has to be part of the team.
I was wondering, a question someone specifically asked about affordable housing to Brian and Brian said, asked, the interviewer asked, how about affordable housing? They said groups want to meet with you and you don't want to meet with them. They said, we can't meet with them, it has nothing to do with us. The city never asked us for affordable housing, so it has nothing to do with us.
I would say that's not true.
I don't, yeah, I don't remember that in the interview either.
We've discussed affordable housing with I-STAR numerous occasions.
I'm just going to bring up the shretz, the idea that it's hopefully not going to delay it. The 15th is, is the, is the day for the meeting, so everybody here is going to have an opportunity. We took the 200 or 150 or 200 comments or so and tried to create about five shretts that kind of coupled a little of this and a little of that. So the idea of moving it to the gymnasium would be like you could see all of these shretts and then you have one, you know, another opportunity to comment, which I'm sure will give you a couple days. See it and say, you know, I like this, I don't like this, I like shrett one, I don't like shrett two, I think it needs a wider boardwalk, I think it needs a great level boardwalk, whatever it is, we're going to take that and then come up with a final plan. So there's no delay after the 15th, other than probably a short delay of a couple days trying to get a little bit more feedback from the public to determine what everybody is looking for ideally. So when we do go back to I-STAR, if I-STAR is open to it, we have a solid idea of what everybody's looking for the North End to look like.
And to piggyback on what Amy said, Felicia, the Choice neighborhood shretts were meant to happen over a period of time.
Right.
They weren't ever meant to be just one meeting.
Thanks, sorry, Ernest, go ahead.
Hi, Ernest Nigoli, 400 Deal Lake Drive, Asbury Park. I've lived here since 2007, August. Like the other lady said, we were promised and thought a lot of things when we moved in. City looked a certain way and the only reason I bought was because I'm a fisherman, I liked the beach, I had two dogs and it seemed like Shangri-La for me. And since then, everything's been sort of ripped away. So I hope it gets put back. I think, I can't see why it was taken out the way it was. The other thing is, I, I've found an impasse now, I guess because of the position of the city manager and the city council, that my matters, whether it's with the building I live in, Santander or Convention Hall or whatever, I'm no longer able to either email or attach anything. And to be very frank and honest with you, I really, really don't like coming here. I really don't. I mean, I feel just always disrespected and discouraged. And look, why not let me communicate? Why? Most of the time, what I'm sending is, is pictures of violations and things like that. Well, why make me come here and talk about it? I don't want to. I mean, you know how many violations there are in Convention Hall? I started a Facebook page site, there's about 40,000 likes on there. People are asking me like I'm a city employee, you know, what can I do? What can I do? You won't even accept my emails with attachments. But what can I say? I speak to engineers, same with my building, the Santander. That building's going to be condemned soon. You've got people running it who don't know anything about it. A management company that was two former city officials that you let go, right? Try and get their grip off our building and all the things that are done wrong. If you remember, I said to the fire department, don't give them a permit to weld on that firescape. It's a pre-1978 firescape with lead on it. The fire marshal in Asbury gave them the permit. The management company brought in a cheap firescape company. They welded blue lead dust all over the lake, the area, right? We brought them into court, they pleaded guilty. And then the management company and the board said, well, you know, you have to pay for it. And they just keep doing that over and over. Now, if I could at least document with emails, stuff that's going on in my building or at Convention Hall or at other buildings I'm interested, or at the boardwalk, or about crime and corruption, I wouldn't have to come in here. So I'm wondering if you could give me a 2019 present? Mayor?
I'll give you my phone number.
I, you know, I don't want to call you personally.
Okay.
I want to communicate, City of Asbury Park, from me. That's all I want. I don't want anybody's personal phone numbers, really. Would you consider it?
Your emails are not blocked. I mean, I've explained this to you.
You know, city manager, let me say one thing to you. Can I say, no, I'm not really talking to you right now.
Well, he's easily answering.
Your emails are not blocked.
Excuse me?
Your emails are not blocked.
Really?
They're forwarded to a separate account, which I have control of and review multiple times a day. The reason why is too many staff people. Numerous staff-
Too many what?
I haven't finished. Numerous staff people have accused you of creating a hostile work environment here because of your incessant emailing at all hours of the day and night of baseless claims and actions against people individually, not code enforcement violations. You were making fun of staff, their people, their persons, the way they look, the way they talk. You made fun of individuals. We have an affirmative action that we have to take to protect the staff from these sort of behaviors. So at that point, we created a separate email account where every email you send comes to me and if it's legitimate, because you send numerous emails about Long Branch, about Deal, about articles from the Asbury Park Press that have no realistic jurisdiction over us. When you send something that's legitimate, it gets forwarded and acted upon, which your constant emailing about things happening in Long Branch, Facebook posts about the Long Branch Fire Chief, has nothing to do with us. We have no jurisdiction there. And this was taking too much staff time, so we sat down and this is the way it's handled. Multiple times a day, I check your email. And if there's something legitimate, it's handled. But stuff from Long Branch, Deal, accusations, the personal attacks, staff couldn't take it anymore.
Is that your speech?
Yes, thank you.
Can I get to retort?
No.
You have three minutes.
Catherine Murphy, 510 Deal Lake Drive. I want to thank the council for opening up Fisherman's Lot and Deal Lake Drive Beach Access. Thank you very much. We're looking forward to Seventh Avenue and the playground being accessible, hopefully this week. Couple things. One is, also thank you for the design shrett next week. I think it's a fabulous thing that the community is going to be involved. I'm wondering, did you also incorporate the survey that Safe Asbury's Waterfront did, the feedback into that, into the information for the engineers to come up with the different models? In terms of the Green Acres funding, and I'm still a little new on the block on that, I have letters from the Green Acres to the City of Asbury in January of 2018 requesting clarification on these lots. And then another letter that was sent in December saying that the funding was going to be severed, that it would not be renewed because they had not received communication from the city regarding those lots. So I'm not sure why it's so confusing or, I mean, I've gone to Trenton a couple times and dug through boxes and spent the time to like, try to figure out things. But it would seem to me that that's something that's pretty important for the community that we figure out how to get those lots figured out, get the funding extended to help preserve our Green Acres area and our public space. The other thing that I'd like to suggest to the council is, we had suggested as part of our mission statement that the community be involved in a waterfront redevelopment alliance or coalition to help the council and to help the community so that moving forward, we can be proactive rather than reactive. And I for one know that I would like to be part of that in terms of staying abreast of the projects, whether it be I-STAR or SACMAN or FASANO or whomever. As projects are coming to fruition, that the community has a heads up and has knowledge of that, rather than after the fact, you know, sort of reactionary information. I think as a community, we all would like to be one and be, all be on the same page. So that's just a suggestion from myself. I know that the work that I did with Hurricane Sandy, Lavallette put their boardwalk back in five months, Belmar put their boardwalk back in five months, Lavallette had DPW, two shifts a day, Belmar had union employees. So I don't know if that's, I realize that we now have to, that the pilings and the bulk cutter have been removed, which may not have been the case there. So that's just something to think about, that I've seen it done in five or six months, so maybe we can do it by the 4th of July. I don't know if we can get all this together. And then the final thing is, we did get, we did FOI the Corps of Engineers to see if there'd been a permit and there is no permit. So if that bump, boardwalk gets bumped out, that is Corps of Engineers purview. It's not something that the city can authorize or that I-STAR can do without a Corps of Engineers permit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Madeline Monaco, 1501 Ocean Avenue. I also want to thank the council for reopening the beach access on the North End. It's really nice for all of us in the town to be able to, you can't hear me? Lift this up. Can you hear me now? I was just saying thank you for opening the beach access on the North End. I actually have a couple of questions. The first is related to the boardwalk redesign and Amy, I'm very pleased that there will be several designs for people to comment on. If one of those designs is replace the boardwalk as is, John, you mentioned earlier that what, whatever comes out of that shrett, we might have to refile for a CAFRA permit. If the redesign is, let's just replace it as is, we shouldn't have to file for a CAFRA permit, correct?
No.
Okay. So listen to that, people. If you want a boardwalk, you can go for a simple design.
The existing CAFRA permit is the one of I-STAR's design.
Of the meandering boardwalk that goes out onto the beach.
So any change to that, if we go back to what it was?
Yeah, I thought you-
Needs another CAFRA permit.
So to go back to the original, you need a new CAFRA?
Yes.
No.
The original, original?
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to ask the rest of my questions to use my time and then we can talk about this a little more.
We'll give you extra because we know, we stopped you, go ahead.
Okay, no, that's okay. I asked you a question. Second question is, does I-STAR need to be the contractor for the rebuild? Or is there another group that can be the contractor? And then third question is, the condemned, or the building that's now condemned at the end of Sunset Avenue on the waterfront, the one that's owned by the, with all the murals on it, what, what's, what's happening with that? I'd like to know what's happening with that. What's the plan for that? I know they're being fined, I believe daily, or maybe not. Okay, so that's misinformation, so I'd like to know what's happening for that. And then the last question is, Brian, or a statement and a question, Brian Schrepp said in his Asbury Parks on interview yesterday that he got feedback from people on North Beach about the pool club, the beach club. And I'm president of the Homeowners Association at 1501 Ocean Avenue. We did meet with Brian over the summer, we did give him feedback. I sent him another email on August 4th to say that our residents had a lot of other concerns that I wanted to express to him and that we would like to meet with him in September and I have never heard back from him, even after a repeated email. So I just want to go on the record by saying that the residents on North Beach were opposed to the beach club. We did give some feedback, but after all, the residents had an opportunity to comment, we were opposed to that. So I just want to go on the record for that. And then can you answer my other questions about the condemned building and does I-STAR need to be the contractor?
Does I-STAR need to be the contractor? No. If the city does it, it would be more expensive, but we will be able to bond it through using surplus from the beach- surplus from the beach account. As far as, somebody asked me before the public session started, why is Sunset Avenue Pavilion condemned? That's news to me, so I don't think it is.
It's not condemned.
There's a lot of rumors floating around today that aren't true. Believe it or not. But it's Asbury, so I believe it.
There's no fines to tax deductions.
Okay. And then I-STAR was also going to put up boards with pictures of their new beach club. I think I communicated with you two as well, Michael.
It was requested of them.
I requested. Brian had also promised the residents at North Beach that he would, as soon as he submitted his plans for the beach club, he would bring them to our building and post them in one of our conference rooms for residents to view. And that's never been done either, and I've asked him for that, and I have not received it.
And I believe.
I don't think we have control over that. I mean, Brian can provide them with documents or not, we can't make them.
We can ask.
We did want to have those boards posted publicly, not just on North Beach, but at the site as well, so people walking up can see what will be there.
We can ask, and to the best of my knowledge, I believe representatives from I-STAR are going to be at the meeting on the 15th, so you guys can ask them then.
Okay.
I'll move it this way since I'm shorter. Terry Adelstein, 510 Dill Lake Drive, and I will be very simple. Amy, thanks, or everybody, thank you for all the work on trying to get a collaborative approach to the boardwalk. I think that that's going to go a long way. I think what'd also be helpful is if we can share the budgeting for how the budgeting's going to work for the waterfront. We've tried to take a look at the redevelopment area bonds and what's being spent, what's been budgeted. We see what Brian talks about, what's kind of been published, the numbers don't match. So if there's any way, as we go forward, we can kind of be a little bit more transparent with the budgets, I think that that would go a long way as well.
It's, okay, no problem. Is there any particular thing you want about the RAB bonds or anything?
As I said.
If anybody asks us for anything, we can give it to you, we'll give it to you as soon as we can.
Okay, well, and we'll ask for more information, as I said, really. But the numbers don't match what was published, so, yeah.
A lot of things didn't match what was in that article.
Okay.
About three months ago, I asked the city financial consultant, Acacia, to do a review. This was a group effort to review where the RABs are.
Do you want to just say what RABs are, Michael?
The redevelopment area bonds, which are doing the infrastructure improvements.
Yeah.
In February, first week in February, second week in February, sent a no request for the RAB review, because we're doing the end of the year stuff right now. We just met on this on Friday, we have another call on this Friday to finish it. And you'll see across all the series is what was done, what was spent, and ask for the private placement memo, and you'll have all the details you need. We're doing it right now.
Perfect. See, great minds were thinking alike. Thank you.
Thank you.
And everything did match up on that side, the articles.
Okay. I knew something was wrong.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Samia Bassoun from 1501 Ocean Avenue. I actually got up to ask about the Sunset Pavilion as well. So the answer is that it's not condemned, and there is no fine being placed on Madison Marquette. Is there any plan by Madison Marquette to do anything? So that's my first question. The second question is, I-STAR must have submitted some budget and feasibility study to the city concerning not only the beach club, but any kind of development they did. Can we have access to any of that business plan or feasibility studies submitted to the city? So we can see, for example, do they have a line item on the budget for impact to the community? That's it.
The question number one, not that we're aware of the answer. And the second question, I think you're asking like, do we know of any other projects I-STAR has in plans? No, the only one that they've submitted a plan for is the beach club.
But the plan, any feasibility plan that they submitted, they did submit a budget, right? There must have been a feasibility with the beach club and any other development is going to do to the city, correct?
When they submit a plan, I don't believe they submit a budget.
Not a construction plan per se, but they must have, they don't submit any feasibility study, any budget, they don't tell you why they're doing what they're doing for the city?
Unless they're looking for easement, or pilot, or something, no. We don't get their financials if it's their own project. Same if you were building a house on an empty lot, we don't get your financials.
So the city has no clue, for example, about what percentage of I-STAR investment into the city is going to do, to have with community development and any kind of impact into the city? I'm just asking, actually curious.
Are you talking about an impact study?
An impact study.
An impact assessment.
An impact assessment study, and it's always part when, in other cities, okay? When a company submits a feasibility study or a project to the city, and in that project they say, okay, we're building this, obviously they have a right to do it because they lease some of the, they lease the land. And in their financial statement of February 2018, they actually say, we own most of the city. I mean, I can send you that article that they publish, you know, they're a public company, a lot of the stuff is available. But is there anything, in anything they have published, showing what I-STAR commitment has impact to the community in Asbury Park? Do you have any of that information available? Any numbers, any percentage of their overall investment?
Not that I'm aware of, basically, any question you can ask on the 15th if you want to, or else we can forward along. But I mean, reading the article, it said like, they've invested $300 million, so I don't know where and what, but as far as like, when they submit plans, all they submit to us are construction plans, unless they're looking for a pilot or something like that, then we get involved with financials.
Okay, thank you, so we'll do the 15th.
Yep. Hopefully, we answered your question.
Hello, Michael Kushner, 1100 Fifth Avenue. And I don't have a question, but I just wanted to talk about the beach club, because that's coming, or the pool club that's coming up a lot. And I think that, Polly and I live on the West Side, so we don't live in North Beach, but we stand with Saul in opposition to this. Not so, not just because of this single beach club, but it's more about what I think it represents, but more my concern is what it really, I see it continue. And that interview with Brian in NJ.com, when he talked about the numbers, and what concerned me is that, he basically said that we're developing the waterfront, and it's obviously developing the waterfront with amenities for the wealthy. And that's going to give the city tax revenues to build affordable housing in other parts of the city. He even said that, he was very clear about that. And I think that what I, my concern is, when Polly and I moved here, and the reason why I moved here, like, our new resident here, is that five years from now, I don't want to sit here and say I made a mistake because the city has changed so much. And when you talk about affordable housing in other parts of the city and this waterfront development, which already is so off limits to so many people, you're just going to have starker divides, you're going to have bigger railroad tracks, and you're going to have deeper segregation. And I, you know, I've met so many cool people here, going to the Dialogue Group and the Baptist Church on the West Side, to that wonderful meeting and everything, you know, and Trudy and Felicia, and we're all going to be here, but we'll be hanging out on the West Side. Because I'm going to see a beachfront that I don't want to go to. Because it reminds me of living in South Florida for 10 years, and I moved in early 80s. I saw what happened to Bow Harbor, and Meisner Park, and Old Delray, which was really a rundown area, and they had an opportunity to really make it diverse and really make it multicultural. And now when you go down there, you just see Ferraris and Lamborghinis, and I don't want Pure Village. I didn't move here for Pure Village. And to sit there and think that like, well, you know, it's not going to happen in Asbury, no, it's going to happen in Asbury. Five years from now, our beachfront is going to look like Bow Harbor in Miami. Certain people in this city, they may like that. Yeah, it's cool. They may like, you know, the fact that we got a lot of these very rich, wealthy people here. I didn't move here, I didn't buy a house here for that. And it's happening. The beach club is emblematic of that, it's what it represents. I-STAR can wait you out, and me out, and everybody out. That's what the plan is here. I love the fact that we have Aida's Little Restaurant right around the corner from us, Ethiopian Dominican. Why isn't that on the boardwalk? Why is a Jamaican restaurant on Main Street? Why can't it be on the boardwalk? It is going to be just like Pure Village. Maybe not the big giant high rises and everything, but it's going to be completely exclusive to those who come down here with the money for those three or four months a year. And then everyone they leave, everyone else can go up to the boardwalk. That's my biggest concern, I guess I want to share that.
Thank you.
Motion closed.
Move it. Second.
All right, we'll move on to minutes. We have four sets of minutes this evening. Executive session minutes of December 27th, workshop minutes of December 27th, regular session minutes of December 27th, and the reorganization minutes of January 1st. Have a motion to approve those minutes, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
All right, we have consent agenda resolutions this evening. 2019-53 is resolution approving special events. 2019-54, resolution authorizing transfer of real estate tax credits from previous years, 2018, 2019, real estate tax payments. 2019-55, authorizing the acceptance of grant funding from the state of New Jersey Department of Public Safety, Division of Highway Traffic Safety for the 2018 year-end Holiday Drive Sober Grant. 2019-56, a resolution authorizing a temporary extension of existing 2018 street performers' permit and establishing temporary moratorium on the issuance of new street performer permits. And a new resolution added this evening, 2019-57, resolution rejecting fair and open responses. Does anybody wish any of those resolutions to be pulled off the consent agenda? Hearing none, have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We have one ordinance to introduce tonight. This is ordinance 2019-1, an ordinance amending and supplementing section 4-15 entitled Street Performers of Chapter 4, General Ordinances of the Code in the City of Asbury Park, New Jersey. Have a motion to introduce this ordinance tonight?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?